... to bring us in line with our ending balance goals and also keeping a revenue neutral budget so that we wouldn't be imposing any kind of tax increase on the residents. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to city manager to get his recommendations and kind of go over what changes he's offered.
If you don't mind me jumping in real quick, I'd like to explain the meeting. So we have a Zoom meeting set up that's posted in Facebook, the number and is also across the lower thirds. You guys can't see them in here, but you're already in the meeting. So if somebody wants to call in and comment on the meeting, this is an open meeting and people have the ability to speak. They can, all they have to do is call in and Mary Lynn is gonna, is gonna watch those. And if you do have a comment, raise your hand in the app, which is star nine if you're on the phone or in the raise your hand feature in your individual app. And then Mary Lynn will get my attention, I'll get your attention and we'll, we'll put it over the microphone so people can hear their comments. They won't be able to listen to the meeting through the Zoom. They'll have to watch that on YouTube or Facebook or on Channel Seven, but so there's a little lag when you do, when you do that, but that's just the nature of the beast, so.
Well, sure. Thanks for clarifying that and I'll make sure to give a little bit more time considerations when asking for input to account for that lag, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Well, since we last met, we've gone through and made additional cuts. The department heads have been very helpful in delivering those cost cuts to my office and to Angela's. Most of these are what I would consider to be deferments. It's basically a delay in a project or equipment being delayed or maintained to a level that will allow that equipment to last a little bit longer. Perhaps at a higher expense than normal, but in some cases probably not. So we've accomplished that and I think we've approached the four million mark as far as reaching the threshold for delivering the fund balance that was recommended by the governing body. That falls short of what the expectation was because the expectation was a higher amount than that. And while we have made considerable strides since that last meeting, we still aren't quite there. My, our discussion today ought to center around a little bit how much more or what our tolerance is at this particular point. Because we feel in reviewing this that we're now to a point where we're gonna get into live positions for sure going forward if we deliver additional savings for the next year. We're prepared to do that, we can do that, but that is really the breaking point that we're at and the discussion point that we're at. You'll also see in part of your packet what I call a decision package, pretty typical that cities do it this way. Anytime you have a request from an outside agency or department that would involve increased funding or requests for expanded services that might not meet the philosophical stance of the overall budget discussion, but yet it's still important for discussion. We would put it in a decision package form so that you all can discuss that and to see if it does meet those objectives for additional funding. The budget scenario that we propose is one that comes with zero percent increases for employees for the next fiscal period. And leaving vacant positions open. We do have some that'll be critical positions that'll come open during that period of time that we'll have to fill, of course. But of the ones that we can leave open, we're gonna freeze those open. So Mayor, with that, that's kind of the brief 30,000 foot overview. Angela's got more accurate information and more specific information, of course.
Can you talk a little bit about what positions would be frozen that are currently vacant?
I'd have to go through the list department by department, but we can, we, we do have that list.
I have that list.
Okay. Mayor, give me a couple, 10 minutes or so to produce that, I might have to go to the HR.
Is that the list you're talking about?
I think that is with the exception of the police officers. Yeah, we have an associate planner for planning, a crew leader for streets, environmental services superintendent, an engineering systems tech, some of those positions.
Okay.
I believe the list was a little more extensive than that by the time we got done with it. But there are some other positions that will, that are open right now that we probably wanna, I don't think we'd wanna freeze. For instance, code enforcement officer. It may be the position of the governing body not to do code enforcement for a period of time. I don't know that that's advisable, I think we're still gonna have citizen complaints. In fact, I know we will because I'm getting them. So that's a position we'd probably roll over and fill pretty promptly. But there are some opportunities in some of these areas where we'll leave these positions open. And I'll get with HR real quick to see what that list was that we originally discussed.
Looking at your report on suggested tentative cuts, vacant positions eliminated, that number looks at $428,000, is that correct?
Angela, what did that deliver for us?
Yes, that's the $428,000.
That's $428?
That's with health insurance and all the benefits as well.
That's health insurance and all the benefits, okay, all right.
I went, I went through and made a, a list of things and that I was considering. And matched it up against your list and you actually got all of them on my list except for, I wanted to discuss the aquatic feasibility and master plan. It was originally on there for 50K and then you have it cut at 25K, is that because you're just cutting the aquatic feasibility?
No, I wanted to explain that. Justin and I had some conversations recently and it was 50,000 and Hutch Rec is gonna pay half of it. And then in addition to that, we had budgeted 22,500 in a past year to do the study. But then Hutch Rec never had the match for it, so we didn't do it. So in addition to that 25,000 that the Hutch Rec is going to provide, we can cut 22,500 from the budget as well. So that is not seen in what I provided because that was more recent.
Okay, and then what is the, I wanted to ask about the golf master plan.
Let's see, I don't know if Justin wants to speak to that and what they're working on that year.
Good afternoon, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. So the golf master plan is a plan we put together 10 or more years ago. The primary goal of the master plan is to update the irrigation systems. Right now it's very old, very inefficient irrigation. So the primary focus is to improve all the irrigation to a modern system that we can control each individual head, so it's much more efficient from a water standpoint. But along with that, we're making updates to the course, replacing troubled greens, replacing some tee pads in areas that it makes sense converting from Bermuda to Zoysia, which is a grass that does better in the, in the winter time.
Okay, so, because I think originally on the thing you provided, the golf was 273,000. With that was with the golf master plan and the roofing. I saw that the 50,000 for the wood frame roof replacement is part of the cut. But what about the remaining of that 273, were we gonna cut any more off the golf and we postpone that a year?
So, yeah, that's, what we've been doing the past six years is in the, in the budget, we've been bonding for half of a phase. So the phases are around, you know, half a million dollars to go in and replace several holes worth of irrigation worth of tee boxes. And so we're kind of down that road. So this phase that we're working on, we'll do four holes, all new irrigation, two greens, four tee boxes, I believe, plus Zoysia.
You had the 50,000 for the golf course wood frame replacement on the 2021 chip spreadsheet you gave me. And then you had the 223,000 for the golf master plan. And you said a portion of that is being bonded, because I just assumed the 50,000 was just cutting off that. But I just didn't know if we were gonna adjust any out of the 223 you gave me on that spreadsheet for the 2021 chip.
They are listed separately and the intent was to cut the 50,000 because that was something we were gonna pay for.
Yeah, out of pocket, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then the other we kept and it would be bonded. So if that is something you would like to consider, we can discuss that, but we have left it on originally.
Okay, and then I wanted to know about, what are the ages of our water tower two and three? And what was the water tower that we recently, I can't remember what number that was.
Number one.
Number one. Then we had two and three that are on the request list, what are the ages of those?
They were last done in 2005.
2005?
Yeah, was the last time that they were coated and those coatings last 10 to 15 years.
Did we do all three of them?
We did them all around the same time period. I think Tower One was actually done right around 2004, 2005 as well, so yeah, all three of them.
All three of them were right around them the same time. I don't know if there was one that was newer or older that we could postpone a year on because it was done a year after any of the others is what I'm asking.
Yeah, they're not gonna be done at the exact same time and it may actually roll into 2022 by the time. We just got Tower Two inspected last week. We're gonna inspect Tower Three later in October and we'll know more about Tower Three.
And that's another bond issue, but it's, no?
It's not.
It's not?
We've got money in our water production reserve.
And the water production reserve, so that's not really gonna help.
I found it, thanks Tom.
Okay, and then I think on here, sorry. The no, you also, sorry, you also covered that one already. I tried to check off the ones, but you had most of them covered. Sorry, my phone keeps going up, I, the button's stuck, all right. So that one, that one, I asked about that one. Sports arena bleachers, is that on there?
We had deferred that a year.
Deferred that year, so I could check that off. And and the water tower's in the reserve, so that's, I'm just gonna put it.
Correct.
All right, that's all the questions I had at the moment.
Angela, I had a question about, on the list of suggested cuts under bonding, the 30th and Lucille traffic signal. Is, would that just place that temporary structure, leave that temporary structure up there, which seems to be?
Yes, Jeff Peterson said that that would not be a good project to do next year and I don't have the details of why. But he thinks more realistically we would get to that in 2022.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mayor, in that list that I provided you, it is the accurate list. It's got a little additional detail on it when we get to a point that you'd like to have that additional information, I have it.
Thank you. On some of these CIP savings on, on the reserve funds, is that just less money we're putting into those reserves? And does that leave us, aren't there statutory guidelines for some of those reserve levels?
There's no statutory guidelines for how much we have in those reserves. There are good general guidelines and it will affect our bond rating if we don't have those reserves. But I, I think the department heads have pretty much agreed that what we are putting into those reserves will be adequate. Maybe not ideal, but adequate.
Okay, thank you. So let's take a best case scenario where our projected revenue shortfalls aren't what we modeled, they're actually better. Do you have a prioritized list of what would come off of this? I mean, we don't necessarily have to get in that, into that today, or are you looking for direction from us?
I think in talking with some department heads and Kurt in Central Garage, I have some ideas of things that I would like to see added back in. I know Kurt's worried about the airport broom sweeper that was listed that we cut. So that might be one thing, it's $60,000. But we don't really have a list of those yet. So if there are things that you would suggest we add back, we could. I just want to mention though that if we do decide to add things back after we've published our budget and sales tax comes in higher, we will have to amend, which is not a really big deal.
Do you, what I'm thinking of when I hear this is if our projection though is lower than our expectation at the four million and if we come in better, maybe we just hit our expectation and not add anything back in.
Yeah, we could totally do that and just, you know, add to our reserve. I just wanna make sure that, you know, if some of these positions seem a little more critical than others, maybe we need to look at adding one back in. You know, it sounded like we're gonna cut a couple in public works and that always gets felt in service levels, you know, by the community, so just a thought. So with all of these suggested cuts, that puts us at the almost 4.1.
I do wanna fess up that I made a mistake that I just realized before the meeting. I forgot to account for NRP, the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. That's like the very last step when you put together a budget because you don't know what that's gonna be until you get done. And so I hadn't done that final step, so we probably needed to subtract about 150,000 from that ending balance that I presented.
Okay.
So I apologize for that.
So that puts us at lower, at four?
Yes.
Obviously, because what's at 488 or 4088?
So maybe like 3.95 or so.
I guess I'll just rip the Band-Aid off on this one. Extra funding for this year, so I know that I think everybody's gotten the letters and stuff on recommendations, but I, I would like to see, are we, do we have in there where we've budgeted the police department staff?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, we do.
So I just wanted to make sure that we are gonna go ahead with that commitment?
That is our anticipation unless we're directed otherwise, we do have it programmed in. We did receive a letter of support, I believe it was from the county, in support of that training in specialized position. If that helps to know.
And then, so.
What is that number?
It's two positions, as I recall.
Yes, it is two positions, I don't recall the total numbers with benefits and everything.
It's gonna be 120ish, I would have a feeling, somewhere in that ballpark, fucking a quarter, probably.
Were there any other departments that had positions added?
No. Not that I recall.
No.
The way all this information is presented and just the cash basis of accounting makes it really difficult to go through it line by line. And I mean, for transparency purposes, it's just always really hard to digest and kind of compare year over year. Things are kind of classified differently, it's, it's a frustrating process. I don't know how we can simplify that because I know if I struggle with it after seven years, the general public's gonna struggle with it.
Honestly, I am from accounting and the information that I'm giving, at work, I'm given much better financial rec, like the way that it's presented. I think that this is a little overwhelming. I think that sometimes if we can hone in on ways to give useful information, basically. Like sometimes what we do is we have to simplify but also present it in a way that you can digest it. I had to cross-reference multiple, so it's not just you. I, I found, I found it, the, I think the information could definitely maybe be presented a little bit better.
We would agree and this year's definitely different than what you've experienced in prior years.
Yeah.
I know the city manager would present something to you, they had a lot of color graphics that had flow lines, it was pretty easy to understand. And several things, we weren't, we didn't have enough time to produce and publish a booklet. And we knew that whatever booklet we put together and presented would be shredded because this is not a typical year.
Yeah.
So we're all in the weeds together on it, on this particular cycle. So I would anticipate that next year's cycle's gonna look a little more user-friendly.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted is, so like sometimes I'll talk about something, you're like, oh, well, it's just gonna be bonded. Well, I would like to see what the percent payment of bond for those are for the year. So what, what is it actually gonna impact for the current year if we started that year versus the total package price, does that make sense? You know, little things like that kind of help.
Understood, yeah.
Well, and this certainly isn't an indictment of your work, Angela, or yours, this is just, it's there's a lot of departments, there's a lot of funds and we typically get knee-deep in this starting about the end of May, which we didn't have that option to do because of a new city manager and, you know, the pandemic waiting for those revenue figures from April to come in at the end of June. So I mean, it was just a comment, I do like the expenditure summary by department, the general fund one and comparable year over year. I think that's very useful. So I might just have a few questions on that if you, if you don't mind. So some of these, like GIS and information technology.
Okay, you're on page 55, right Jay?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have clarified that.
Tell, tell us where you are.
Okay, so this is a page that kind of compares year over year expenditures by department and shows the percent change difference between what's budgeted for next year and last year. And some of those information technology type departments like IT and GIS are coming in quite a bit lower. Is that because we're not, we have less software or?
Staffing, so IT had a a person dedicated towards police and they moved it from IT back to police.
Okay.
So things like that really aren't very transparent and
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, we need to work on a way to make that more transparent. GIS is the, the same type of thing. So GIS moved personnel to the utility funds, so I'm not sure if it was water or sewer or both. But they, they moved personnel around too.
Okay. So then I noticed like Eastside Cemetery went up, it's only 7%, but it's on the cut list too. So what do you think that was?
I
I recall that being a position.
It's not a position, it's somewhere in contractual and I'm struggling to remember where it was.
It might have been, I saw that it was seasonal, it was cut 5,000. Yeah, so, okay. Fun Valley, that's another one, that's greater than 10% lower.
Yeah, and Fun Valley's 2021 budget is closer to actual past results.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. How are we getting the reduction in the, um, Public Works Administration? That's also very close to revised. So are these numbers, these percentages, are they comparing revised or budgeted?
They're comparing twenty twenty's budget to twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense, thank you.
Let's take a minute to talk about Memorial Hall, can we? Just, uh, not only the line item expenditure, but just the, while we're in the budget process.
The albatross.
Philosophical, uh, future of what we as a governing body and as a professional management look as far as the future of Memorial Hall. It's been on the table, uh, to, um, do something pretty dramatic with Memorial Hall. There are constituents out there that would disagree with that as well, so what, what, what might our thinking be?
Justin, do you want to speak to this?
Can we take it down and put it in the nice little walking area and part it, extend it over across the street from this one?
That'd be awesome. We sell it.
So in past years when we've talked about Memorial Hall, the two options have always been, I guess there's three options. You know, one, just continue down the road we're on, which is, um, seasonal activities such as, as dance classes and we, we host a few other events in there. Um, it's a pretty minor use, you know, and the second option, um, would be to just mothball it. Um, so, uh, we, we would still have the utility fees. Um, I didn't do that calculation this year, but from previous years, it saved us about fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty.
We would cut that, that budget in half. Um, but, but we host no events over there, we basically keep the building from falling in on itself, we'd continue to use it as storage. Uh, we store a lot of, a lot of records over there, um, type of thing, so. Um, and then, you know, the third option would be, do we start looking long-term and doing some sort of feasibility study uh, to what is the best use of that? Now, it's going to cost money to do that.
Yeah.
There is a, um, working with planning, um, with Ryan Vitlock on, on potential of a, of a grant through the state. I don't remember which, which organization that was.
Ryan Tier.
Ryan Tier.
Perfect.
To, to look at kind of what future use of that building could be. So, you know, it could be a combination of maybe we mothball it, but then continue to study it, um, and see. Um, you know, it will, you will hear if we, if, if we end all events there, you will hear about it, there will be some people who are very upset.
Yeah, um, there was a public outcry years ago, uh, when the, the city council at one time.
Isn't it in there?
Uh, proposed to actually raise Memorial Hall.
Yeah.
And then there was a referendum vote that reversed that. And then the city in turn has put, I don't, I'm not sure how many hundreds of thousands of dollars to somewhat restore, uh, the Memorial Hall to what it is today.
Correct, yeah, so that's been fifteen-ish years ago.
Okay.
Happened, um, we did several hundred thousand dollars, new windows, um, brought it closer to A D A compliance, um, added the elevators, those sorts of things to get to where it is today.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure where it fits in our priority today in, in light of everything else, but, uh, it continually appears here, it's a hundred and some thousand dollar line item expenditure.
Yeah, yeah, and to answer Sarah's question, yes, it's not air-conditioned, so that's why we only rent it from, you know, through, you know, from the fall through, through mid-spring because it gets, it gets really.
Really, really hot in that building, yeah.
So, so right now it's just sitting vacant, just storing records right now.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and community concerts, which is always one of your normal, they're not going to do a fall season.
Yeah.
Now, whether something happens in the winter and spring, who knows? So that's one less revenue.
I know that a lot of people have compared like, you know, we have the Fox Theater and we have other, do we, I guess, do we need the Memorial Hall building?
Yeah, and again, the only reason we still have that building is because the public rose up and there was a public vote to keep it after the council voted to demolish it. So, um, I'm really curious to hear if there, if you have additional information on that grant, Ryan, and what, what that would look like.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Council, Ryan Vitlock, Director of Planning and Development with City of Hutchinson. Um, yeah, so Justin is correct, one of the things that the Landmarks Commission is looking at is going after a Historic Preservation Fund grant from the Kansas Historical Society. And this would be, um, it's a, it's a grant fund where you can do feasibility studies, reuse studies, things like that for historic buildings. More than likely, it would be a multi-phase project because, uh, Kansas Historic Society usually only grants at most about twenty-five thousand dollars. When we've looked at consultants, it's probably going to be at least fifty thousand to have it done because it's not just a, a typical reuse study because in order for it to get historic funds, they have to look at it from a historic standpoint. So it has to make sure that it maintains its historic character, um, and everything, um, of, of why it was nominated for the National Register. It is on the National Reg, uh, Historic Register, um, so there is some possibility that, and, and this is something that a, a plan would look at, is, um, any work that we do on it, you can get historic tax credits for it. And those tax credits, uh, the city could turn around and basically put those back out onto the market. And so there is, there is some way that if, if we actually get the setup and we would need to probably talk with historic tax credit consultant on how to do it. But, um, that is one thing that the Landmarks Commission has kind of looked at and said, that's sort of some unused, uh, money that we haven't really even looked at going after. So there, there is definitely, I think, certainly from the Landmarks Commission, an interest in, uh, keeping the, uh, Memorial Hall. But, yeah, it, it is going to be expensive and.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, it's, it's difficult because you want to maintain the historic character, um, so you can't really do a lot of different things. But A D A is a huge, I mean, if, I mean, y'all have been in there, the ramps obviously don't meet A D A requirements and so that's a huge expense.
So does anybody know, uh, after the vote fifteen years ago, that the voters, uh, voted to not raise Memorial Hall? Are we bound by that for an indefinite period of time?
I would have to research that.
Yeah.
I'm not, not familiar, but I certainly can go back and get that information and bring it back.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to have some feel for exactly what, uh, what that binding vote meant.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
It, it's more than fifteen years.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
I mean, it, it, it's, it's got to be at least twenty or maybe even twenty-five.
Yeah.
It's a lo- it's a long way back there.
It could be.
Oh, that, oh, okay.
The vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to remove that question out of the equation.
Did you have another vote?
If we're, if we're bound by the vote that we cannot raise it, then that eliminates one of the options.
Absolutely, yeah, I'd certainly look into that and see what, what, if there was anything that bound us to do that.
You know, Ryan, at one point in time, Jim Saitnader was talking about putting an R F P out to see if there was anybody who was interested in the building to develop. Did that ever go anywhere?
I am not aware if it did go anywhere. And typically, the issue you're going to run into is, uh, most people, especially with it being a historic building, they're going to want to see a historic reuse plan with it, basically, um, an idea that's handed to a, a potential developer because of all of the roadblocks and everything with it being a historic building. So, um, with my experience in other communities, when you just put out an R F P on a historic building without a reuse plan, you don't get many takers.
I see.
And it's on the National Register because which president was it, Harding or Coolidge?
Wilson.
Will, no, it wasn't Wilson.
Wasn't Wilson.
It's nineteen, nineteen eleven?
Harding.
It's, is it Harding who put the cornerstone? I mean, that's, it's claim to fame, right?
Yep.
Right, okay.
When would a decision on the grant be made at the state?
Um, we would, uh, the issue with it is that there needs to be matching funds. And so, um, actually in the planning, uh, budget for next year, we did put some matching funds in there as a potential that we could, could use for that. Um, and, and so that's something we're working on, but those are typically, uh, those grant applications are typically in, in spring. And then we would hear back probably late summer, early fall next year.
Got you, okay, thank you. I might just pause for a moment since we've been meeting for about thirty minutes now and ask if anybody in the public on the Zoom meeting would like to make any comments about any of the information presented. Because I know this is such compelling conversation that there's probably hundreds of people.
Out there wondering about it.
Three thirty in the afternoon.
Thirty seconds behind, so we need to do something, we sing a song or something?
Come by on, I'll make you one.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, this is a gap filler, you know, no dead air kind of a thing.
Yeah.
So let me check.
Speaking of Memorial Hall, which this is different.
Nobody's raised their hand, so.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll go on.
I'm going to sidetrack too while we're at it. Um, I know this is different because it's not city-owned, but I know we're going through a hard budget season now, so this doesn't really pertain too much to the budget season now, but the landmark building. We need a strategy.
Yeah.
For that for next year.
Well, you know, um, that is privately.
Privately owned.
And I know that, um, Jim Saitnader has been trying to engage the owner, they live in Wichita. I had some conversations with the college and, um, the community foundation was hopeful that we could do something like they did in Pittsburgh and turn that into student housing. Um, you know, we're very limited unless you want to explore something like eminent domain, which when we're talking about property rights, it's a pretty sacred right, so.
They're back on their taxes like six years or something, aren't they?
If they're back on their taxes six years, then they'll be put on the county tax roll sale.
I'm thinking that should be coming up soon.
Yeah, because you can only be three years behind, actually. So typically, people, those absentee owners, they get three years behind, they get on the sales rolls, then they pay one, that final year, that last year, so then they're only two years behind until the next tax sale. And so it's this.
I think the person that bought it though, from what I understand, doesn't really want it. So they haven't been paying the tax, they got it in a package deal with another property that they actually wanted and took it along with that because that was part of the deal, and so they haven't paid taxes on it or anything. So when it does come up on taxes, I think we should, couldn't we buy it from the tax sale and then do something with it? I thought just take it down and put a parking lot, to be honest with you.
Um, we could purchase it in an auction, we'd have to be the winning bidder.
Yeah.
You know, and then we would be held accountable for bringing it up to code.
Or demolishing it and putting it in a parking lot.
Well, I mean, it'd be really cool if we could, if we could gain control of it and do something really amazing with it, but.
It's probably like ten million dollars worth of repairs.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the Wiley cost, you're not far off.
Probably ten million in repairs, that's why nobody's really even bought the thing. But anyways, that was my piece of mind, I know that it's getting behind on taxes and thought maybe next year we should look into maybe doing something with it. But it's, I think you could build student housing cheaper than it would be to renovate that thing.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
Yeah.
Does anyone know whether Jack Mansky has recently looked at the project and, uh, considered applying for tax credits as he previously did?
I don't, I know his last tax credit application didn't, wasn't awarded, so.
No.
Um.
Because he had some interest at the time and he certainly is a skilled, knowledgeable, experienced, uh.
Person dealing with that, yeah.
Individual that has proven time and time again what he can do to renovate, uh, from the Wiley building to, uh, multiple different, the old hospital. Um, I don't know what Jack's appetite and Jay's appetite would be to have a conversation with them about, um, the next round of tax credits and.
I just know that it's, it's almost getting dangerous, that's what I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a mess, it's such a beautiful building too.
Yeah, it was.
All right, I guess back to the budget meeting, I think.
Okay, so did, did you want to get into some of the outside agency funding recommendations you had, Jeff?
We probably should.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so as it stands right now, knowing that we're not meeting, uh, the target and in order to do that, uh, we're probably going to have to get into some live positions. And certainly, we're already modeling not filling positions that under a typical budget cycle, we would be filling. My recommendation on that is that we, uh, not advance any additional funding requests beyond what current year outlay is. Uh, so that's going to obviously impact Hutch Rec and some of their requests. Uh, I believe Quest, uh, is going to be impacted by that as well. I don't think, uh, the Chamber is, I heard from them earlier today, they're not going to be submitting anything. But there may be some others that have late requests that would be impacted by that. But to be honest, I think that's reasonable. Um, I think it has parity with what's going to happen at the city level and, um, it's, it doesn't seem completely unreasonable to me. The other one to discuss and to bring new information forward is on the human relations position that you guys have received requests for conversion to full-time on. I did have a meeting with the foundation and they have made a pledge of twenty thousand dollars per year for a thirty-six month period for funding to the city to take that position to full-time. Now, obviously, at month thirty-seven, we're probably not going to terminate the position or reduce it back to part-time. That's not a likely scenario if that were to be accepted by the governing body. So what we did, um, is we modeled what that number, what that expense looks like in a ten-year scenario so that you all have that number. So you have that in front of you to get an idea as to what that, that may look like. And at the very least, we propose that we continue to fund the position at the current level that it was brought in at, uh, what, a year, a year and four months ago, I think it was, if my, if my calendar's correct.
I was under the impression that we were currently funding that at forty-five. Is it only being funded at thirty, or what is it currently at, thirty-seven?
It was fifty-three, wasn't it?
I did not use the, uh, any formal agreement, uh, been able, been able to find that. So what I used was our payroll software, um, I utilized that.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, and I rounded, I did rounds, but not aggressively so.
Okay.
So I think that's probably close, it may be slightly higher than that.
So if we were to take that position full-time with private funding, um, would the city still pick up the benefits?
That's something that I would need direction on, right now, the position doesn't have that. And so that additional funding taking it to full-time would, would trigger that. So that's something we would have to have an appetite for. And then I think the bigger implication to the city is going forward after year three, potentially into year ten. And so that's why we put that larger number out so that everyone have that. But as far as the benefits, yeah, that's probably what, twenty-eight, thirty percent of the overall total cost of the position.
Okay.
Angela's report on expenditure summary on human relations showed the actual twenty nineteen of forty thousand nine thirteen. And we budgeted sixty thousand four twelve in twenty twenty, revised twenty twenty fifty-three four eleven and twenty twenty-one fifty-three five twenty. So that's, that's the number that I've been looking at, is the fifty-three five twenty.
Some of those.
Is that correct or not?
I, I think we're probably both right because I think some of those other numbers include training junk, it's out-of-town travel, stuff like that that we've frozen, uh, so that may have been reflected in the budget, but may not have been the actual salary number for the position in its totality. I, I, I would not be surprised to learn that it is slightly higher than what I reported to you here. That, that would not shock me because the number did seem slightly low from what I've heard of the position, uh, as being paid.
I've had some people talk to me about this position. Um, the only thing I, they brought to my attention probably was about three citizens that the human resource officers should live in the city limits, should be, uh, be in the city limits. So I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but I'm just passing that on from three different residences.
Steve, we let that horse out of the barn several years ago when we.
With police.
When the police were allowed and fire were allowed to live outside of city limits. Um, I agree with you, theoretically, I think that should be the case. But that horse, as far as I'm concerned, is gone.
But I think the sensitivity of the particular position, I mean, we require the city manager.
That's a little different.
Resident and when you're talking about human relationships and, and the extra roles that she's talking about as far as community development, community, I mean, if you're living, think about if she has to go to an event here in town, is she going to bill us for the travel expenses because she's living outside of town?
No, they don't.
You know?
I don't think she has any kind of a mileage allocation, does she?
No, um, I, I think the discussion in, in my office has had, we've been bumped a couple of times on this. Um, and I don't think it really came to light until the recent events, uh, that we've dealt with. I don't think it was any part of the processing of caseload that you guys previously dealt with with that position. Um, this really didn't come to a pressure point until we had the recent events nationally. And so that was one where I think, uh, of the people that pinged me, it was this person ought to live in town. This person ought to be part of the local, um, you're right, other positions aren't required to do that. And if, if you think it's a unique enough position to where it does warrant that and setting direction to community, uh, you know, certain interactions of the communities, it's one that you could require residency on. Uh, I did talk to Dejada about that and I think where she left it was. Uh, I did talk to Dejada about that, and I think where she left it was. That's not a real viable solution for her right now, maybe it's something to consider further if she was converted to full-time. And then had the resources to, uh, to ponder that decision a little bit more with. So it's, that, that's really the dialogue, you guys have framed it well, that's kind of the, the issues that we, that we've seen from my office.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that sentiment, that a position of this importance should probably be one that lives in town, I feel the same way with the. Public information director, city manager, police chief, um. However, I.
How do we pick and choose?
Exactly, it, it seems like, then it becomes an equity issue. Which is ironic considering the position, um, but I did, um, have a conversation with Dejada as well and said. You know, would it be, would it be feasible for your family? If it was made full-time, and she seemed amenable to that contingent upon the salary level, but I think. The conversation needs to be greater, it's, it's not about one person, it's about whether or not we prioritize. The type of tasks that this role takes on. You never wanna cater a position to one person and, and see the position as that person. Our race relations and extra work around, um, ADA and, um, work with, um. You know, other marginalized groups, is that important enough to warrant, uh, work at the city at a full-time level? I think it is, um, and I think that if the council feels strongly that that role needs to be. Living here in town, um, but you're willing to make it full-time, then we discuss that with Dejada, and if, if she's not willing to. To maybe make that move, maybe, yeah, I mean, maybe. We look at something else, but I think that she probably would, and I think she's doing important work that, um. That warrants full-time. Status, uh, especially when the city's not even really gonna be.
I had a question, so.
Picking up the tab.
On the recommend, or the, the letter, it states that she does like weekend. Um, get-togethers and meetings, and how is that like logged as far as pay goes, does she start her time from the time she leaves her house and?
Well, she's not hourly, she's contract with like twenty-five to thirty hours, so take the pandemic. There was a certain time where it was probably really difficult for her to log the hours she was being. Contractually obligated to us for, but then post-pandemic with the new civil rights movement. I would suspect that she's probably working fifty to sixty hours a week, I mean, she's here almost every weekend, even though her. Husband's in the ministry and, you know, it's, it's heavy, time-consuming work, she's at a lot of evening events. So that's the way I understand it, and Angela, you might be able to explain it better, cause I, I don't really know the agreement, but it's contractual, right?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the agreement either, that would probably be a question for Tom. Tom, where are you?
I think I, from, from Tom, it's actually a part-time position.
It is a part-time position.
That's my understanding of it, and the position was, uh. Presented and offered early on without benefits, uh, because it was a cost factor, not because of a, a lesser, uh, level of dedication on the part of the city. It was a cost factor trying to squeeze this position in without, uh, busting the budget, so that was accomplished that way. And, and I know there's flexibility, there's great flexibility provided by my office to her office, because the mayor's correct. There were weekends where she was here Saturday and Sunday, but during the week after some of those activities slowed down. There might be two days in a row where I don't see Dejada in the office, and that's okay. In a full-time position, that would look different, in my opinion, and I think my expectation would be elevated, that that person would be there, uh, certainly on a forty-hour balance.
I guess, uh, I'm gonna try to state this the most clearest way out of my head, um. If it went, this is what I'm kinda getting at, if it went to full-time, I think that there should be more job requirements and, and an expansion of her job. Description, right? And part of that other job description that would be added it, added would probably be the community development portion. And that's why I felt it would be important for her to have the residency thing, because you'd be dealing with. I think the expansion of the job description would be, um, not only human relations, but community relations. And so if you're gonna know a person that's gonna be in that particular position. Should really know their community, live in their community, be with their community, and advocate for their community. So I've, when I look at it as a full, full-time position, I think there needs to be job responsibilities added. A broader scope of job description that I think includes the need for the, um, residence requirement. Because of the type of nature, I think, of the expanded job requirement and description.
Well, I know we're dealing in personnel, which typically as a governing body, that's not our role, that's the city manager's role, but it, it, it's okay to have that conversation. I, I wonder if really, uh, fundamentally, what needs to be examined would be the actual ordinance itself. And to review, uh, its objectives, uh, and its content. And if there are expanded responsibilities, perhaps that's where we need to start, is to revise the, uh, the human relations ordinance itself. To meet the intent of.
Cause I think in order to fill it as a full-time, I think we need to broaden the scope of the ordinance.
Actually, though, we curtailed part of the ordinance, didn't we, because we got rid of the ability of the. Human relations officer to subpoena people as part of the investigation process.
Want any of the subpoena or.
No, but I mean, I think that's in the original, I think that's in the ordinance. And I don't think we actually deleted it from the ordinance, where's Paul? But I think we restricted when we put this in place, that we restricted the level of investigative. I mean, is anybody else with me on that?
No, no, it was restricted, which I think it should be, a lot of the jurisdiction falls within the, the state anyways. Um, I was more looking at this, it's not as more of authoritarian role, but more as a, um, building bridges role. Maybe transforming it into something more of, of.
Which.
Different.
Yeah, which I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with, but I think John's right, we have to go back and look at the ordinance.
Yeah.
As it's currently constructed.
Well, and, and this is actually in our city code, and, um, so I think we're talking about that portion of the city code and. Uh, city manager and I did have a conversation about this, and when you look at the code and read that, it is very. Narrow, and, and it hinges on investigation of cases, and that does not probably warrant, based on case numbers. A full-time person. So, again, totally agree, we can expand, um, the job responsibilities, I feel like, um, the person in that. Current role has organically done that, based on what the needs of the community have been, she's been, uh, very flexible and. And I, I think that this paper outlines a lot of what you're trying to accomplish, Sarah, and if you have other. You know, other options that you think should be in there.
I think, yeah, so I was looking at it, I think it might be something that we need a little bit more time of, and maybe we could. Position it full-time next year, after we review the ordinance and, um, kinda scope in on. What the additional, um, responsibilities and provisions could be, is what I was thinking. Just because it is a tight budget year, but also we have an ordinance that's involved, we have, we. It doesn't, the particular job description at the moment doesn't support the full-time role unless we actually expanded it, is what I'm saying.
When you look back historically, though, it was always a full-time role, this is the first time it's been part-time. And I agree that this year seems like the lousiest year, when we're making cuts, we may not be increasing any of our outside agencies. It's like, why are we even considering this, and I would say, the reason we're considering it is because. As a country, not just as a community, there is a movement occurring right now. And the civil rights movement of our generation, and I think that we need somebody on our staff. To respond to input, um, increased calls for action, uh, increased community development opportunities. Increased engagement that comes out of that movement.
Okay, and I, I know, and this is probably beating a dead horse, cause you guys hear this from me all the time, but I did bring this up prior to budget season, and then you guys were like. Oh, we need to talk about that at budget time, then I brought it up at budget time, and you guys, well, this isn't really what you need to talk about at budget time, so. I'm gonna beat the dead horse on this one again, I think that. We can fund it for next year, it needs extra job, like in order, I think it needs to be transformed as far as the broadened scope. Um, because of the particular job description, if we're gonna add a full-time, we need to add job responsibilities and more engagement. But if we're, we've got, what, it's three years before it goes on our books. And I've been asking about a revamped centralization of some of our staff, so if we can, you know. Cut in other places and streamline, um, like I said, with like combining the. Planning and commissions with code and inspections department, and having that kind of thing, then the money can be netted out. In the three-year time period, is what I'm saying, so if we can make a commitment to. Work on some efficiencies, maybe go a little bit more paperless, um, centralization of our workforce. Then, yeah, we can, we can net some of those costs for this position out, so it's not a full burden in three years. So I think that if we are gonna add a position like that and add those long-term costs. Let's seriously think about the three-year plan of central, centralizing and reorganizing our employment structure in the city.
I'm always game for looking for efficiencies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's unreasonable. Who knows until you take that deep dive, I mean, and when you think about it, we have a brand-new city manager, a fresh set of eyes. On staff and budget, and some of that may come out of just, you know, your, your management style and what you see needs to be done and. Um, things, ways things could be do, be done differently. I mean, I don't suspect you're here to pack the budget to the gills, you know? It's a, I think it's a small step, and I get it that everything seems small, but then it adds up. I get that, um, I think we should try to make it happen this year. Provide benefits.
Would that start in the, was it starting in January?
Have, yeah, have a conversation about residency with the current person in that position. Maybe she's not interested in moving, maybe it's a moot point, um, maybe taking it to full-time should be contingent upon residency.
And then.
I, I don't know, I'm. Open to ideas, I just.
Just kind of a sidebar, and I appreciate what you're saying, Sarah, in terms of efficiency, and I think we're all certainly proponents of that, but. I've, I've been in management long enough to, and working with boards and so on, to make sure that we don't send mixed, mixed signals to our city manager. Uh, that we are perceived as, uh, I don't wanna say interfering, but. Interjecting when, uh, really that's the role of our city manager itself. And for him to present a, a plan, if he would, and we can certainly encourage that. But to get into the inner workings of, of the city operation, um, to me, that sends mixed signals to, uh, our CEO.
Why I'm being silent sitting here for the most part in this discussion is that I don't wanna put current departments on the auction block, so to speak. It would be, I'm professional in me to, uh, guarantee delivery of a consolidation when I'm not yet convinced that that. Level of efficiency or savings exist, uh, I love the concept, uh, I understand the concept of digging in and finding efficiencies that way. And I think there's some out there, uh, and certainly when we're ready to, uh, announce those sort of things, and I think we probably will be able to deliver some of those. At some scale, but I, I hate to have them on the auction block as deliverables, uh, during a, a budget process. When it's probably gonna take another six or eight months at least to get deep into that.
I think it's also important to remember that we're a governing body, we're not bound by anything next year that we did this year, we can. Can change it whenever we want, I know it's harder to change something after you've, um, made it a certain way, but, um. It's not like we haven't done that in the past.
I mean, for example, the human relations officer, or that position was created when there wasn't a budget for it, and we did it anyway.
Well, I think there's a need for her, and she's done a wonderful job, it's just that, uh, we all have to answer the citizens on different things, and that was brought up to me. And, uh, that she, uh, she whoever's in that position, they would like to see them in, um, as a resident of Hutchinson, so. I think we need to move, well, we have a discussion with her and see, like you said, whether she'd be up, would wanna do that or not.
And she might not. So, you know.
Well, then what would that put us, let's say we approve full-time with residency. She doesn't want to, but we've already approved full-time and we need a, and we, let's say, and the consensus is we need a full-time, then what? Cause we can't really present it in a way where like, well. We'll give it to you if you move, I mean, that's kinda, um, that just ain't right.
Well, that's basically what you're saying.
Yeah, but to approve at full-time, then, and if she couldn't, would we list the job for someone else?
Well, you'd have to.
We'd have to, because we can't present it in a way of and/or under stipulations, we would have to either approve it. And if she couldn't meet it, we'd have to hire someone else, cause we can't present it in that kind of way, that's not ethical, in my point.
Mayor, I'll follow in after you.
Yeah, go ahead.
If, if you define the objectives of the position and you review those, and you find that they're different under a full-time scenario. Which I think that you would versus a part-time scenario, it would, there'd be broadened expectations of that role. Under full-time, and one of those broadened expectations, from what I'm hearing, is, is likely to be residency. So what you could do is. Conditionally approve the position for next year, subject to several things, one, a review of the scope of duties. So that that can be more defined, and then the residency requirement would come along with it, so that way you're not going to impact. That position at all, uh, for the current period, and then going forward.
And the ordinance, right?
You're not bound by law to take this donation from the foundation, it's a generous donation, but let's be honest, it's not gonna pay for the lion's share of this position. Certainly not going forward for the broader period.
Yeah.
So it could sit on the shelf until such time that the community absolutely demanded that the position be full-time. And then deal with it at that point, and then you would still give your current employee that option, fulfilling that obligation of being, uh, full-time and a resident. Typically, what she would do in this scenario also, you would give at a minimum six months, and some places would give as much as a year.
Yeah.
And knowing that her husband has, uh, some obligations on his end, uh, that would probably be reasonable and appreciated, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So, but there's ways you could do it, I, we're just kinda getting the flavor of the group to see what we wanna do.
So separate and apart from the foundation's offer, uh, from a budgeting standpoint. Uh, we would then be comfortable with the line item fifty-three five twenty as a line item budget for the human relations for twenty twenty-one? Is that, is there a?
That is part-time, that's not.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, yeah, but that, that's, that's what we would commit to for twenty twenty-one, would be the fifty-three five twenty.
Well, my concern is that that wouldn't include any kind of benefits, and so offering a full-time position without benefits, I don't think is very attractive to future applicants. Or even probably the current one, she may not wanna go full-time without benefits, what do you think benefits would be? On a sixty, let's say sixty-five thousand dollars, if you're looking at fifty-three.
Well, I know health insurance is gonna be between seven thousand and seventy-five hundred a year. Um, so you have that, and then capers is about six and a half percent, um.
Since it's a tight budget year.
Yeah.
Is there anywhere to offer part-time with benefits for this next year, and then we can reconsider if needed for twenty twenty-two?
I would rather convert the position to one hundred percent contractual, if we were to go that direction. Cause we've got other part-time positions that now we're into quite a quandary on in comparing them. You think you could do it? I don't know that it's advisable to do it.
Okay.
I think we send a really strong message as a city that we're committed. To the ideals of equity and full inclusion of everyone in this community. If we fund this position full-time with benefits, I think that we're in an amazing position, that a private organization has stepped up. To help subsidize, so we don't have to burden all of that cost, however, if the city doesn't feel like the position is worthy of full-time. Um, and, and we're just doing it because the community foundation is, is offering this money. I, I don't know that's the message we wanna send, you know what I mean, I think we either send a message that this is something we care about. Or, or we don't, I guess. Or, or we don't, I guess. And I don't mean that to disrespect anybody's opinion, uh, we all have our different pet projects, I just think that this would be. The opportune time for our city to step up, have a review of that scope of duties with input from the human relations commission. Uh, the human resources officer, the council if need be, god, hey, having this conversation about personnel in an open forum.
Yeah, I know.
I think it's very unfair to the person who's in that position right now, but, oh, hopefully she's not listening. I guess I've said my, my piece, I really wanna see this full time with, with benefits, we can figure it out, it's. We're adding two police officers and not even flinching. Um, we're adding those police officers because it's gonna make our community safer. And it's going to help, um, with people who have mental illness, it's going, it, it's gonna help with community policing, it's gonna help with community relations. I believe this is the same. Falls in that same goal, you know, community relations, making the community more harmonious.
I'm, I'm okay with it as long as we're allocating more duties. We have to justify the addition.
I agree.
We have to justify the addition of time, we would have to require more, more duties.
What is the rest the council thinks?
Would it be feasible to get a revised increased job description before we make a final?
We could do that, and in doing so, I would also reach back out to the foundation to make sure that we fully understand all the parameters of their funding. This was kind of on the fly, it was off the hip a little bit, and I know there's the expectation from, um, the foundation that the position remain intact. And integral beyond thirty-six months, of course, they wanted to prime the pump, so to speak.
Right.
To give this position.
That's how they do it.
Right, so I know they, they see that in their visioning, uh, so I could get that level of commitment from them as well, if that's what the group wanted to do.
Well Jade, um, my thought is, is that, um, I, I think as a, as a governing body. Based on the city manager's recommendations. That I think we have a responsibility and we need to be consistent with making sure that, uh, we are whole. With, uh, all of our personnel. And with a hiring freeze and, uh, not filling vacancies. I think that's an underlying message to four hundred employees. That I can support the fifty-three, five-twenty. Um, at the current line item. And, uh, work with the foundation in terms of how that might look and how that might be structured. To, uh, if it becomes a full time position or something greater than a halftime position, including benefits. Those particular details can be worked out with the foundation, and, um, maybe they can help offset some of that, but. That, that's my position, is that I'm, I'm comfortable with the fifty-three, five-twenty, that keeps us whole with, uh. All of our other personnel, and I think we have a responsibility to do that.
Okay, do we then have a responsibility to go ahead and take those two new police positions off, in that, in that same line of reasoning?
Well, um. I, I don't think.
That wasn't a new item, that was something that was for, no, it was presented to you on the last budget session.
I presented it last year, it was, it was one of my ideas, but I'm just saying that we, if, under this argument that we shouldn't be adding any. That we're on a hiring freeze, I just think we're sending a, we're sending a message no matter what we do.
Not, I want the police thing, I think it's something that we absolutely need. And I'm not discounting the human relations thing, I'm just saying, is there any way we could? Not make a full commitment until the next budget year, until we've ironed more stuff out, it's just so. The heat of the moment is what it's feeling like right now, the last minute. Um, during, you know, this time of duress, and I'd feel more comfortable, like I said, having more. Time to evaluate and assess, right?
Yeah, I know that, moving at the pace of government, you know, it's, we're not really an organization that is well poised to, uh, respond. Immediately to community needs, we're not a business. So, so I get what you're saying, it's typically not the way things are done. John, I do like, I like, I understand your proposal, we keep it at fifty-three, then, you know, maybe. I, I, I wonder if that's going to be enough to cover benefits, if, if we have that twenty. But, you know, maybe we work with it, we see, I'm willing to accept that. Maybe we can get a greater private commitment, I, I, I don't know. Um, I'm willing to accept that if that's what it's gonna take to get you on board with this position.
Yeah, I, I don't have any issue with, with, with the position and, uh, the part time, full time, I, I don't have any dispute with that. It's just a budgetary item, Jade.
Yeah.
Keep us whole, um, I'm comfortable supporting the existing line item.
Okay.
For twenty-twenty-one.
You could decide not to have a four million dollar reserve too.
We could.
And lower it and that.
Yeah, I mean, every.
So I mean, you, you, you can look at it multiple ways.
Sure.
Exactly, we. I'm gonna shut up, cause I think I got what I want, and I don't wanna screw it up.
Well, listen, I guess I'm not understanding fifty-three, we raised it up, is that what we did, uh?
No, fifty-three is what the current, um, Jeff said he was going off of.
Okay.
Some of the payroll information and sort of budget line items, so it's currently fifty-three, I believe that, but, um, that has a little bit of money for programming. I'm guessing it's not all salary, would that be fair?
That's fair, there's like office supplies and shit like that.
Massage that line item.
I mean, since we're into the, we're, we're deep into the personnel and public. I wanna, actually had a question, now I'm gonna hit the fire department on this one. The fire department, like drives their trucks to like the gym, you know, and to the Walmart. And three of them go in and they, or they drive their big trucks down the meteora, and what kind of costs could we save? If they use like a more of a recreational vehicle to go shopping or go to the gym?
Sure, this is a great conversation, and I've had it at every city I've been at. It irritates people too, when they see an engine parked out in front of Walmart, not, in a non-assigned parking spot, and that's something else that goes along with this. It's a philosophical response, and it's one that doesn't have to be accepted, but it's one that. Might make sense to the average person when they understand it. Uh, the guys being on shift, like they are, when they, uh, decide what they're gonna have for dinner, sometimes they go out and they may, while they're doing driver's training on the vehicle. Or doing the exercising of the equipment, go out, hey, let's grab that stuff while we're out, we're on duty, so we have to be able to respond, we're actively engaged and on call. So wherever they go, they have to be able to respond and jump in the equipment and dispatch, cause they got.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm not answering the question.
You are, I understand the response time, but let's say the firehouse is over here, but they took the truck all the way over here, is the response time really even faster? From where they're particularly at, and then two, is there a way they could schedule it so that there is? Having the ability not to take those around in more of a recreational fashion is what I'm getting, is there a way to strategize to keep it? The response time intact, cause like I said, if they're taking the vehicle away from the firehouse, the response time's not gonna be the same. Depending on where they are. And I also had some people, and I know that they need to, I know like some people at the, like, um. People work at the prison, they need to keep tough, or it's like, does, both fire and police, do they both work out on the clock? Or is that just fire?
They do.
Okay, there's a, like a workout requirement?
Yes.
I think it's in their y- union agreement, one of the, I think.
I just didn't know if like, instead of all three of them, one of them goes in a recreational vehicle to go shopping, why the two man the station? That way your response time is still from the, the station, not from wherever they are in the vehicle.
I don't think I'm gonna be able to provide an answer that's gonna be fashionable, but it's one that's universal and it's nationwide.
Yeah.
And the reality is that that's how departments are run, and that's what they do.
Okay.
Can you, as a governing body, change that? Absolutely, you guys could do that, you could put the hammer down. There are conveniences provided to the employees by being able to do some of those activities while they're on service runs for the equipment. Let's go out and grab whatever we're gonna grill tonight, you know, cause we're on shift for an extended period of time, not like an eight hour employee, but a much longer. And the reality is, there's not a chance in heck that we would allow them to be away from the equipment, so that they couldn't respond to an on-call.
Yeah.
So, we bind them to that, so maybe shame on us for making them be able to be responsive to a call when it comes out. So, you can change that.
I just thought, you know, how many do you need to drive it, right, so if they get a call, you have the one person in the recreational vehicle, I'm gonna go to Walmart real quick, I got my thing. Two have to remain with the vehicle equipment, so they can get it there, and if you gotta drop what you do and. Crew the recreational vehicle.
Individual pieces of equipment.
I'm just saying like, big gas, I'm thinking, and big equipment, three people, um, all shopping at once, you know, I mean, like. Just thinking of ways that.
It's deeply philosophical.
Yeah. Cause the person in the recreation could meet up with the other people, right, if you put maybe like a siren on the recreational vehicle, I don't know.
What, what I'll tell the group is this, uh, there are minimum dispatch requirements for certain pieces of equipment that we have, there's some equipment that we can't roll with one person or two people on board. We gotta have the full crew.
You have to have the full crew.
I don't have that slate in front of me, but I know that that minimum dispatch level exists, otherwise we wouldn't hire people at that higher ratio level. We, we'd save a lot of money and consolidate it down. So you're talking about a convenience to employees, is what you're talking about. If we're gonna make them be engaged and able to respond like that when they get toned out, we put them in their truck and tell them stay in that piece of equipment. And while you're out doing whatever it is you do, or whatever you're doing, that's gonna be the service run for the day on that piece of equipment. You know they'll test in the bay, all the sirens, the lights, every day, you figured where the lights at on this stuff. They run that equipment every day.
Yeah.
Just to make sure it's serviceable and it's running appropriately, and, and I know, I've, I've had the question myself, it's a one point one, one point three million dollar piece of machinery. Are we gonna run the tires off of it? Maybe, and if that's what it takes to make sure that the tires move all every day on that piece of machinery that is functioning properly, that's. That might be the price of doing business to make sure it can respond.
Okay.
That's not a beautiful answer, but it's, it's nationwide.
Yeah, I just figured I'd ask the question.
Great question.
I did wanna take a moment to pause again and see if anybody in the online Zoom audience had questions. They wanted to present to the council on anything we've discussed thus far. So, here's a little thirty second awkward pause again.
Thomas revised my number onto Jade's position, it's approximately ten thousand dollars higher than I reported, I think I was looking at after tax or something.
Oh, got you, okay, I thought maybe, so it'd be more like a sixty-seven.
That has raised their hand, there's, there's still several people on there, but nobody's.
Nobody's talking.
All right, appreciate that, Tom, thank you so much. Um, I do have to jut at ten till five, so I may have to step out if the conversation isn't over in thirty minutes. Um, but I did wanna cover the other outside agencies, maybe one at a time, if you'll indulge me. Would we like to start with the Hutch Rec, um, request for increased funding?
Sure.
I, um, kind of said my piece in the last meeting about the importance of the neighborhood program and, and my support of it, so. I'll defer to, um, other comments.
Well, not, not to cut the conversation short, but the, uh, outside agencies, the Hutch Rec, the Chamber, the Quest Center, request. That, uh, I would be comfortable with us continuing to fund them at, funding at the current twenty-twenty level for those three agencies.
I will second that, uh, agreement with you, Dave White.
Well, we also have to consider how much we're giving, like, to the band and to.
Yeah, that's right.
Are we decreasing any of? Our, uh, all the, our contracts with them say that if we have a bad year, we don't have to pay out their full contract, contractual. Are we just gonna keep it the same, or are we gonna reduce any of those?
I think it's such a nominal amount.
Yeah, I, it, it is, they're very small, but, you know, you need to. Yeah, the arts commission and.
Category of, uh, of, of low funding for twenty-twenty-one.
See, I mean, that's how I feel too, yeah, so.
I think total, all of those together is between thirty-six and thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's minuscule in the grand scheme of things.
I think you had a second on that already.
Oh, no, I was just echoing, I was echoing.
I was looking for some consensus.
I'm consenting with you.
It, it's just a bad year to ask for an increase, I mean, even though all of them are totally justified.
Yeah, but.
But, I will mention that, I think, if I remember the conversation correctly last Tuesday, the reason the Hutch Rec is asking for an increase is because. The community foundation provided like three years of money.
Is dropping off.
So, um.
Just a bad timing. I mean, there's a lot of places that are suffering right now, so, and losing funding or. Or, uh, lines of credit and all kinds of things in the private sector.
Yeah, I was really hoping we could double down on that work, but, um. I, I sense that I'm in the minority there, which is nothing new. You said the chamber did not ask for an increase?
Uh, that's correct, uh, had an email, uh, this afternoon indicating that, cause we were curious if there would be one coming, and. I, I think they, uh. They probably saw where we were headed after I told them we may be getting into live positions.
Got you, okay, okay. And Quest Center was, is that the last one?
They were asking from thirty to forty-five, the Quest Center, I believe.
Yeah.
You sent me an email on that.
Requested the allocation for forty, fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Dollar increase.
I think it's actually.
We're the organization, uh, wish them well, but.
Yeah, it's from thirty to forty-five. Fifteen thousand increase, proposed.
Do we have any idea what the county is doing on this position, I hate to see it fall apart if. Yeah, I don't either, anybody?
I have no idea.
There is some sense that. Help for small businesses is even more critical at this juncture.
Well, my feeling is, is we're in a crunch right now, I would be ten to lean towards just keeping it all the same this year.
Though we can always look at it again next year.
Or if you wanna fund everything, you reduce your account balance, your reserves.
Remind ourselves of, uh, of our city managers suggested tentative cuts. The total cash cuts, two point five million dollars plus bonding. Uh, add another one point three million dollars, so we're up close to five million dollars in, in budget cuts on a thirty-five million dollar budget.
All told, that's correct, not all of them hit the general fund the same.
No, I understand that, yeah, I understand, I qualify.
Sorry, it's total big picture, correct.
And, you know, these cuts, these suggested cuts, can you clarify for me if those are cuts from budget requests? Or cuts year over year, I mean, we're not, these are from their department head requests, right?
These were cut from budget requests.
Okay.
Not all of them, in fairness to the department heads, some of these budget requests went in before COVID.
Yes.
And so, under a typical cycle, you'd, you'd replace the two hundred thousand dollar Peterbilt, uh, but not this time.
Got you.
So, yeah, but they were requests. That's been the agony of this whole process, and you guys have been there, right there with us, uh, it's just doing it in such a fast paced, short window to. To get this thing delivered, it's been tricky.
Appreciate your work on it, I know it was a really tough situation to be thrown into.
You gave me great staff to lean on, I appreciate that.
I mean, it's depressing anytime you have to do this, no question.
Yeah, I look at these outside agency requests, and we've always been such good partners with these, you know, these agencies, it seems like such a drop in the bucket when you look at our. Thirty-five million dollars.
But we're not cutting.
No.
We're not cutting any funding though, during a crisis like this, we are not cutting any outside agency funding.
That's fair, that's a fair assessment, Sarah, good point.
And I do hope the public appreciates exactly these difficult decisions. Um, that I think we're trying to be responsible to the taxpayers, uh, as best we can to hold the line on a mill levy increase. Um, that I think we're trying to be responsible to the taxpayers as best we can to hold the line on a mill levy increase. Um, maintain a respectable general fund balance and absorb millions of dollars of budget cuts. And hopefully will not negatively impact, uh, the basic services of our city, which the taxpayers expect. And, and I know our, our employees will deliver on those expectations.
I got a question. I was looking over here. Mr. Clenning, can you step up? I got a question on public work, sir. We were renting ex, I see an excavator here, twenty twenty, renting an excavator. Uh, we're not renting, is that, we're not renting it no more, or we're not going?
We're not going to rent.
Okay.
That's correct.
And, uh, so that puts a little bit more strain on our other equipment that's left, right?
Well, um, that was gonna be for a ditch cleaning project where we try to, we got like thirty miles of ditches around town. So, every year about this time, July, August, when it's somewhat dry, we have a, a ditch cleaning project. And we've chosen not to do that. One, we don't have the staff available to devote to that. And two, with the budgets, uh, the way they are, uh, we're going to not do that project this year.
Okay. And then I see several different trucks, even with the park department, uh, different things that are not gonna be replaced this year. Um, so our other equipment's gonna take more, well, not abuse, cause, but more, they're gonna be out there more, correct?
Right, right. We're, we're gonna, yeah, essentially delay the replacement of those by at least a year.
Okay.
Yeah, so they've got some higher mileage. We'll, we'll be putting on just a little bit higher mileage than.
And this is for Mr. Park, too. You guys, your trucks will be more in the shop than if we don't delay a year or, or not, or?
Correct.
Right, yeah. That would be, I think, a logical leap, is that, uh, it could be more repairs.
Okay.
You know, I, you know, there's like this curve, the, the ideal time to replace that equipment is before it starts really costing a lot of money in the repairs. And that's really what we, we try to look at. And when we do our evaluations of our equipment replacement, we're looking at how often is that piece of equipment used? So, you know, how many hours or how many miles a year are we putting on it? How much in repair costs have we spent on that this past year? And over the life of the vehicle? So we look at that. So, we are looking at, at several of those metrics that we're, we're measuring and we're doing those repairs.
Working for the city for so many years, like I did, the equipment are very important to our employees. They gotta be in working condition and so on, so. Kudos to both you two on making these decisions here, as I know the equipments are very important. And, um, I just wanted to let you, I think that's great that you came up with this. And I know it's gonna be hard on the people, but work for the city. But, uh, we have to do what we have to, you know. So, you're comfortable with all this, correct? Same with you?
Um, yeah, to some degree. The only concern that I have, um, is that as we push stuff back, it's, it's a domino effect.
Right, right.
So, but we've done it for three or four years in a row now.
Right.
And actually, I think it was Mayor, a couple of years, made that, made that same comment about, well, if we push it back, what's it gonna happen? Well, I'm gonna ask for it next year. Plus everything I was gonna ask for next year anyway. So, it, it's just domino effect. I think we just gotta be careful of. But we do look at all these equipment. Um, you know, our, our mechanics are great. We do, they do a great job of maintaining the equipment. Uh, but there is that threshold of, you do see your line items for equipment repair go up as, as our replacement schedules go, go back.
It's a trade-off.
Yeah, without our maintenance garage department, we couldn't do it. They are great, so. I just wanna tell you thank you for that.
And thanks for the heads up that you won't be doing the ditch project. I'll, I'll look forward to all my ditch calls that I get this summer. And I, I understand we have a question, Todd, so.
Yeah.
Somebody does care.
Jackson Swer is on, is on the phone. Uh, wanted to remind him that the lag between the conversation is gonna have, you know, like speaking to the moon. So, uh, Jackson, if you could, uh, if you can hear me in thirty seconds, uh, can you, you know, kinda state your whole question, and then we'll pause a little bit and, and respond. Unfortunately, this is not the best way to have a meeting. I di, I didn't plan it, so.
Hi, this is Jackson Swer. Um, sorry about the lag between YouTube and Zoom. I hope that you can hear me now. And, uh, as, so I'm one oh three West Twenty-second, for the record. I am the director of Startup Hutch. And I just wanted to make a comment about the outside agency funding, um, to say that I certainly appreciate the need, uh, to try to keep that funding level for next year and the importance of trying to make everything balanced. I know that there are a lot of different things that go into that. I, I do wanna make a comment that entrepreneurship and small businesses are especially important right now. Having said that, I certainly understand the need, uh, to keep, keep things under control at the city funding level. One final note on that, um, just remember, recall for, and maybe some new information for the new city council members. This is part of a longer-term, five-year plan, uh, to create some new programming that this new entrepreneur navigator position is about. And that was, the increase is a part of that plan. I think we can work it out without an increase this year. But do understand that we will be continuing to work towards that plan, that long-term plan. I know you only make one-year budget commitments. So, just be expecting a continued conversation about that as we go forward into the future. And look forward to, uh, continued opportunities to work with the city on, on building our small businesses and our entrepreneurs in this community. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Jackson.
Yeah, thank you, Jackson.
Thank you.
Appreciate your understanding of a tricky situation this year financially. Were there other comments on the budget, other items?
Well, where are we at with the human resource position before we leave? Where are we at with that?
You wanna summarize, or we do?
I, I took the consensus as, um, the funding at its current level.
Okay.
And current, uh, expectations of the position and the flexibility that it currently has would remain the same going forward. If we had to cut positions, it's not a position that we would identify in a cut, uh, because priority has been given to it to remain intact in its part-time form. And for any new information coming in, my expectation would be this, too. If the foundation, uh, calls me in twenty minutes and says we're gonna double our commitment. Uh, I would then bring that back to you all as a new, as, as new information. It'd probably be a new discussion at that point, maybe. So, um, that's where it was left as far as my, my observation.
Yes, we do need it, so, okay. I understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Angela, um, ask you to look through your crystal ball. I'm looking at your latest general fund, uh, summary.
Okay, which page?
Page fifty.
Okay.
You've got, uh, twenty twenty revised, well, twenty twenty budget, we had a, um, ending balance of December thirtieth of twenty twenty of four point two million dollars. And you've got a revised, uh, twenty twenty of five point seven million dollars. Do you believe that is, uh, on spot, spot on? Uh, is it understated, overstated? Do you have enough information at this juncture to suggest anything different than this number here?
I think that's my best guess right now. Um, I think it remains to be seen how the state fair, um, being canceled will impact us.
Okay.
Do we have those numbers from last year?
Like, looking back at the past three years, I don't see more of a bump in sales tax more than a hundred thousand. Um, so I'm going to assume it's going to be a hundred thousand or less, but I don't know that for sure. I, I think that's really hard to guess at, um, right now.
How much did we typically make when the fair comes in?
Um, that, that's what I'm saying.
Just a hundred?
It, it's hard to say, but right now, like, say, we would normally collect the September sales tax in November. I don't see more than a hundred dollar, a hundred thousand dollar increase in November in the last three years.
Okay.
So that would be my best guess at how much that will impact our sales tax. At, at this point. Um, but we, we still have yet to get a sales tax number that's more in line with what we'll see for the rest of the year, uh, are.
Is that ten percent? Did you modify that from fifteen to, to ten percent?
I did. I had originally put fifteen percent, and I reduced it to ten percent.
Is that what the guest transient tax to?
No, um, the transient guest tax doesn't go into the general fund. It goes into its, its, its own separate fund. So, um, yeah, that's to be seen as well, how much that will affect us. We only get it quarterly.
Okay.
Do we know how much it went down when we didn't have, like, the basketball tournaments?
I can't remember.
I mean, that's just kind of an off-the-wall question, but curious.
Well, that would have been, we would have received those at the end of May.
Yeah.
Because that's a March event.
Yeah, so.
But we didn't have a major.
Well, we would probably get our transient, get a C.
It'd probably be more like July, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think so. Because we get it quarterly, we will get it in July. We should be getting it soon.
Okay, so we'd have an idea.
So you're gonna, you're gonna stand, you're comfortable with this ten percent for a two-year end?
I feel like I'm comfortable with that, yes.
Okay.
There's a lot of moving pieces. I just learned that school won't start till September now.
What's that?
Schools, there's an executive order that schools can't start until September. That may impact spending. I mean, there's just a lot, you know, a lot of back-to-school.
Right.
Who knows?
Cause they haven't figured out yet how, what school's gonna look like.
Yeah, for sure. Um, lots of questions still out there.
Mayor, can I query the group?
Yeah.
First of all, apologies for not delivering the number that you all directed, and I think our mutual objectives were sincere when we, uh, attempted to deliver that number. So we're setting right at four million bucks, as far as are anticipated. Is that something you all are comfortable with as far as us preparing our final budget documents to set up public hearings with? If it is, we can get that ball going and we can, we can march forward. If not, we probably have to get into some, uh, deeper discussions internally, of course. Uh, but that's, that's where the real, uh, tough decisions are gonna be made, if we, if we need to go forward. And if that is the position of the government, we'll do it, for sure.
And this, uh, four that we're at, and that's without doing the phase three, we're maintaining everything. I just wanted to let the public know, like, right, we're willing to sacrifice some of the reserve to keep our employees and services intact, um, cause we're not gonna implement the phase three, which is the. And then, um, I had one question. I've looked over actuals and budgeted in the past, and our actuals always come out a little bit higher than, cause we conservatively estimate on all of this. Do we have, do we ever, have we gone back to really look at how far off we normally are, or?
Yeah, I, I feel that if we set our budget around four million, we'll probably end up around four point three million.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I, I, I feel that that's where our actuals would probably end up.
Yeah, and I think that, again, that's why you have strong reserves, so you can make a few concessions and keep services, service levels at the same pace. And take care of your employees. It pains me that we won't be able to give them the salary increase this year, but at least nobody's getting laid off.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I certainly commend the, commend you for getting to four without major staffing cuts. So thank you for your work on that. And I'm, I'm comfortable with it going.
I'm comfortable too with it going, for public.
That's great. That speaks volumes of you all and, and your level of support of, number one, the services that the city provides through its employees, and the, uh, the value the employees have themselves. So thank you for that. I'm sure that that's gonna resonate throughout the organization. Thank you.
I, I just have one question, uh, from a bonding standpoint, a bond rating standpoint. Have we inquired with our financial advisors as to if this scenario were to play out at a four million dollar ending balance? What impact would that have negatively or, or otherwise on our bond rating?
Yes, um, we possibly could take a hit on our bond rating, but I asked what that would actually mean in terms of our interest rate. And it would be very small, like, less than half of a percentage. Um, so, i- it won't be very detrimental. And right now, um, our bond council let us know that other cities have done twenty-year bond sales and got like one point six interest rates.
Wow.
So, like, now is a really good time to bond. Um, so i- if interest rates are that low and continue to be for a while, taking a little bit of a hit on our bond rating shouldn't be that dramatic for us.
By a glance, uh, GFOA standards kinda set the stage for what the anticipated level of reserve holding is. And at a glance, uh, correct me if I'm out of line here, but my, my review of this was that we were pretty close to where uh, a reasonable distribution of fund outlay would be, uh, certainly by the time we leave the utilities intact, cause we had that discussion. They, they still maintain their fund reserves like we had talked about at the last meeting, which was beneficial and favorable to this discussion. That was a good discussion to have. Uh, so I, I think we're probably right in line with GFOA recommendations, would be my guess. Correct me if you think I'm wrong on that.
We might wanna be slightly higher, like four point five or so, but as we decrease our spending trends, that target's gonna decrease. We, we used to say it was five point two, so it, it's probably come down a little bit, but.
With our reduced spending.
Yeah.
Calibrates.
Yeah.
And based on what other cities are, I think we're probably in better shape than a lot of places.
Exactly.
So, you know.
Yeah, we've been very conservative.
Been very conservative, probably.
Pro, approval.
Mm-hmm.
Before we kinda wrap this up, uh, I wanted to take a second to address an issue that's been coming up a lot for me today. I don't know if other council members are getting messages or calls about this issue, but it's the mask mandate that the county commission, put into place yesterday. Um, I did reach out to the commission chair this morning and ask, asked, um, if they were, if the county was gonna be putting out additional communication to businesses and residents on what that means, frequently asked questions, um, et cetera. I, he was gonna put me in touch with the health director. I'm not sure if they're working on that. So I do know that the city has gone ahead and moved forward with trying to present, or trying to put together some graphics and some, some information to the public until we get, um, more information from the county. There's a lot of questions about, you know, do I have to wear a mask in a public? Well, for instance, this building is closed to the public right now, so do you have to wear a mask? Um, do you have to wear a mask, um, if, inside if you can maintain social distancing? A lot of this is outlined in the governor's order, which is what the county commission adopted. Um, but for those of you who still have questions, I completely understand that, um, there's some lack of clarity right now, and the city's gonna do whatever we can to get information out. Um, again, this was not a, a city-level decision. It was made by the county commission, and so I suspect that they will also, um, work to provide some additional information. So, be on the lookout on the city website, the, uh, city Facebook page, and, and also the county, county pages.
And exemptions. Exemptions page and what that means.
Yes.
I had a couple of questions yesterday, because they're like, well, I picked up my kid at daycare, but they said they're, you know, following exemptions cause they take care of a child with disabilities and.
There are some questions about.
Kansas legislator exempt from their activity.
That doesn't make any sense to me either. But you also can't conceal carry in the Capitol, but they passed laws allowing you to conceal carry everywhere. So they kind of, you know, talk out of both sides of their mouth on, on a lot of issues. But I didn't need to get into that editorializing, did I?
I was just like, I was going through the exemption list yesterday, cause I had consented it on the phone, and he wanted to know, so I was like, okay, well, let me go through it all. I was trying to find it in there, and I did. I said, well, this is what it says, but honestly, you know, maybe you should call the health department or speak to the county. Cause it wasn't my decision, you know, so I know there's a lot of that going out there.
Lot of misunderstanding about where the responsibilities lie in managing this crisis, city versus county.
Yeah, and that's my, my question is, is that I don't have any fault with the, the decision the county made. But do we, as a city municipality, do we have any jurisdiction over the resolution that the county passed?
No, because, um, it, well, for one, counties have broad authority under the public health statute at the state level. And so the counties really have jurisdiction. And then this was a statewide order, order that was adopted by the county. Jeff, you, you know a lot more about this than I do.
The, the question we get, uh, Mr. Dave Line, in, in my office is, so the cops gonna come get me? Well, not until you go to Walmart and they ask you to leave and you refuse, and you make a scene, then yeah, you'll probably get charged with trespass.
Well, I've noticed that, uh, Manhattan and Salina, Newton, as city commissions, have all adopted ordinances. Does that take precedence over what the county has done, or is the county not taking that action?
In, in Salina, the city did it before the county did it, but then the county came back and adopted. So, I, that one I know about, but, but the other I, I don't know. Speaking, speaking of the county, are we meeting with them next week?
No. I tried to get another date with Ron. He's being shifty.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll get a date.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else for the greater good? Anything else for the greater good or any other public comments? No public comments?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate you so much, Angela, and all your work and the department's work on this. And also Jeff and all the department heads. I know it's not a fun year to do a budget.
So does that complete our budget sessions?
We will bring back budget documents that are centered around what we've developed and got to today. And so the next time you see this, we'll be asking you to do several things. One is to set a hearing date, and then our documents will drive off of that, and we'll make the deadline. Yeah.
Okay, because we still have the 15th, right?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. Awesome. Well, great. Thank you so much. Yep, very good.
Thank you.